Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, November 10th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion? Scott? Second? Joel? All in favor? Okay. And now we are going to convene an executive session to discuss TTA negotiations. Can I have a motion to convene executive session? Scott? Second? Lou? All in favor? Okay, everyone.
Scott being there?
That's okay.
Okay. All right, everyone. We will be back at approximately 7:30. Thank you for your patience. We just came back from executive session. And first order of business is pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and never beated in justice. We're going to start off with board comments. And tonight, we will start off in this direction. So, Lou.
So, we held our first Strategic Plan Steering Committee meeting on October 21st. This was an introductory meeting where we discussed our approach for collecting data and community input. And we also reviewed the superintendent's implementation timeline. We're also tasked with familiarizing ourselves with the New York State's Portrait of a Graduate, which will be used as a guide throughout our process. From now through next May, the committee will be hard at work reviewing data and gathering feedback from members of the district to shape the next five-year strategic plan. The final plan will move into implementation next July. Thank you.
I was on that committee as well, so good update, Lou. Thank you very much. So, other than that, I don't have any other comments. I'm good. Thank you. Joe?
No, I have no comments at all.
Okay.
The facilities committee hasn't met yet. I think we're doing so at the end of the month. And I believe we are, yeah.
If anybody wants to join the facilities committee, we're looking for an additional member or two. So, please send in your resume to the board, and we're happy to review it.
So, I just want to say, first of all, a big congratulations to all of our sports teams who've advanced to regionals and beyond. I wish you luck in the next set of games. Special shout-out to our girls soccer team. They had amazing accomplishment this weekend. And also, our cross-country and swimming is on to the next level as well. And we've got boys football coming up this weekend. Also, throughout the last month, I had the pleasure of attending both the PTA Parents' Night Out and the Athletic Council Cheer Football fundraiser. Both were really great nights out, so thank you to those organizations. Committee updates. We had a policy committee meeting where we discussed the varsity athletics PE waiver. The discussion was to run the pilot program, and we will get feedback from that pilot program for the winter sports and decide how we're going to form the policy. It's totally new to us, so we sent out a survey to see who's going to be interested in about how many kids are going to participate in the waiver, and then we'll see how it works, kind of decide what, how to write the policy from there. We're also going to be looking at a couple of new policies coming up, and overall, taking our policies and just doing a good review, because a lot of them have not been updated in quite some time. And we also had our finance committee meeting in early October, which we had an in-depth presentation from our external auditors. They also did a mini presentation at our last board meeting. We discussed our financial standing, as well as the health of our reserve balances, and they reported that all was in line with the district of our size and that our business office does a great job. And that's it for my comments. So, comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. So, to echo some of the similar thoughts of the board and congratulations, I just want to share a few minutes of some of our great student accomplishments that we've had. But before I do that, I want to take a minute to celebrate our veterans in honor of tomorrow and Veterans' Day. So, thank you to all our veterans for their service. My father was a proud veteran, and I always like to acknowledge the service of all of our brave men and women who protect our country day in and day out. And kudos to our G O advisor, Ms. Iverson, for organizing a Takahoe Day with Where Your Veteran Pride, which I have on today, as many of our staff did as well. So, great initiative, and great to see all of our students and staff participating today to support our veterans. So, thank you very much for organizing that. In terms of our, some of our student accomplishments, they are many, so just bear with me to go through this great list of some of the things that we've been celebrating recently. So, our choral ensemble singers, Maya Samara and Kiji Nakasiko, performed in the All-Area State Concerts at SUNY Purchase. Great job to them. Strings orchestra, Vincent Handy, was selected to perform in the All-State Orchestra this year. He was also appointed as Assistant Principal, Second Violin, at the All-State Orchestra Conference. So, congrats to Vincent. We had several of our students that were acknowledged for, received honors from the Italian Award Night held in East Chester High School. It was actually the last board meeting that we did, so I wasn't able to attend, but I know our Italian teachers were there. So, middle school, we had Angelina Ari, Alexis Retta. At the high school, Angelina Lee, Marco Marchotia, and Rocco Briante. He won the scholarship for the Desiccio Italian Scholarship Winner Award, so kudos to them. For some of the athletic front, we had a lot of great accomplishments from our athletics teams this year. So, Varsity Boys, hard-fought battle in the semifinal playoff game. They fell a little short, but a great season. They lost to North Salem. Our varsity cheerleaders did a great job this season, first time in the competitive game-day competitions. And the cheerleaders, again, fell short to, in Arlington, to a tough north Putnam Valley team, excuse me, Putnam Valley team that's been, had a team for many years. But our student athletes did a great job and should be very proud of their first season in the game day. The girls varsity soccer, this past weekend, up in Binghamton, I had the pleasure of going, along with some of their staff that were there, Mr. Fiori, Mr. Colzano, trustee Abrams was there. We were able to cheer on the girls team, and we had a lot of loud and proud parents in the audience cheering them loud. And they were victorious, 4-2 over Groton. And they're going to move on to the state championship weekend this upcoming Saturday. So, we wish them well in their endeavors, and they're going to hopefully bring home the title. But either way, we're very proud of our girls soccer team and the tremendous season. So, this was their first-ever regional championship that they won in Binghamton, so kudos to them. And we're going to look forward to hopefully celebrating them in the near future here at an upcoming board meeting, making sure we acknowledge their accomplishments and a wonderful season, in addition to many other student accomplishments that we've had. So, varsity volleyball at the county championship on Sunday was a tremendous, hard-fought game against North Salem, went all five sets. The girls fought their hearts out, came up a little short, but just a real back-and-forth team, back-and-forth game that they played with great pride. And, you know, we have a tremendous future ahead in girls volleyball. I think there's no seniors on that team, so we'll be right in the mix next year as well. Again, the student athletes did a great job in representing Takahoe, as all our students do, and tremendous season. I saw, was able to see a lot of the girls volleyball team and just tremendous skill level and athletes and the community spirit that they bring together with the team is bar none, the highest level of excellence. So, kudos to volleyball. Varsity girls swimming, so congratulations to Bryn O'Keefe, qualified for swimming and diving sectionals in the 500-yard freestyle by the time of 5:52. So, congrats to Bryn. And varsity cross-country, Sophia Doherty, Violet Lynn, and Isabelle Bastani, qualified for the state championship in Queensberry on Saturday. So, we're continuing to move on and compete all across the state in all sports. And this upcoming Friday is our varsity football. They will be traveling to Maupick High School as they take on for the Section 1 championships in Class D tournament. So, good luck to all of our student athletes upcoming in the near future. We have great things to celebrate here at Takahoe. So, that's it for those quick updates. Just a couple of other things in terms of Superintendent's Conference Day. So, kudos to our, all of our teachers and staff. I think we had a couple of initiatives that we spent a good deal of time on. One was Magic School AI and kind of getting some professional development for teachers, another tool in the toolbox to really start to use artificial intelligence and lesson planning, design, supporting students' differentiation. So, hopefully, that'll be a good initiative. I know some had started the year working on it, so we had a representative from Lyric here providing professional development, which was a good activity, and I think many left with a good feeling about that. And the second one is a much bigger lift, and that's where we're starting our curriculum mapping. So, we have more conversations to come, new initiative, kind of getting through the software with Atlas. That professional development was done virtually, so something that we have to consider of looking at how to further support our teachers to make sure it can be successful. I think everyone sees the value in really looking at curriculum maps and having a really articulated K-12 curriculum that we can have for our own resources internally, as well as for the community, to know what our students are teaching and learning at each grade level and to make sure that we have continuity K through 12. So, more to come on that, but I think a good first initiation to that. I think it is a big lift. It can be a little anxious and overwhelming, but through conversations of how we can support our teachers and really make it manageable, you know, we'll go piece by piece and, you know, work on that together and make sure that we can be successful and make it reasonable so that the outcomes are really successful for teachers and that we have as a great resource for our district moving forward. So, that's it for my updates, and we have a few at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Comments from the business manager?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Comments from our student expression? Kai Rogers?
Good evening. Going off of what was already said, a lot, a lot of greatness has been achieved at Takahoe in the past couple of weeks. Our Ragamuffin Parade was a huge success, as always. We love getting to interact with our Cottle students, who we know look up to us so much. Our sports have been doing extraordinary. Very proud of our soccer team for making it for the first time in history, so, and of course, every other team who fought their hardest. And I know a lot of students are excited about the pilot that was put out this week and, or last week, and that's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kai. We really appreciate your time on the board, and you guys looked great for seniors. Your Halloween costumes, it's one of my favorite Takahoe traditions. It's fantastic. Okay. If you would like, you are welcome to leave, but if you would like to stay, you can also do that. It's up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And now, comments from our community partners.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alexandra Campana, and I live on 8 Pasadena Road, Bronxville, New York. And I'm here representing the Takahoe SEPTA. I just wanted to announce that in a few days, Tuesday, December 2nd, at 7:00 PM in the library, we're going to be hosting our Charter Night event. So, it's the night where we're going to become an official PTA, and we're just inviting the whole community to join us in celebration. And that's it. We're very excited. Thanks.
Congratulations.
This is weird. I'm Theresz Gordier, 114 Parkview Drive. I lost my thing. Great. Bronxville, New York. I'm here actually for the Athletic Council. Beth is stranded, thanks to, you know, all the airline issues. Well, I'm going to say what everybody's already said. Congrats to our girls soccer team going to states. Huge deal. We wish them a lot of luck. Cross-country, also, congrats. And the swimming team, I think, is really important to highlight because it shows how we collaborate with our partners and get, for a small school, we're able to give the opportunity to participate in many sports that we can't house here. So, that's a big deal as well. The Athletic Council has been cheering on and sending them off with their goodie bags for their travels. Both teams have recently received jackets courtesy of the council. Big thank you to all the volunteers and participants who made last week's Poker Night fundraiser such a fun and successful event. Was not there, but I heard it was great. From Allison Tite. I heard from many people. Where am I? So, as mentioned, at the recent Board of Ed meeting, the Athletic Council fundraising and memberships directly support all of our Takahoe athletes. We are very proud to share that we recently donated approximately $7,300 this school year to eight Takahoe teams. Memberships are still available. Your support helps us fund all athletic grants and future initiatives, so we appreciate all of the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Theresz, and thank you for all that Athletic Council does.
Hi, I'm Sue Warnes. I'm the president of the PTA. Couple updates since last month. I want to say that our Parents' Night Out was a successful event. It was a lot of fun. It's always a lot of fun to see all of the younger couples that are there enjoying a night out, and I don't know any of them, and so I'm like, oh, wow, this is terrific. We have a whole new crop of people coming up. I try to get to know people so I can rope them in on the executive board at some point or other. But I do want to say a quick thank you to Mr. Fiori and Mr. Marash because they agreed to offer some priceless experiences for our raffles, things like VIP seats for the middle school play next week, you know, our concerts, the play in the spring. VIP viewing area at the Ragamuffin Parade was a hot ticket, so that was, was a really nice addition to that event. I'm excited to say our Grants Committee has been able to award 11 grants so far. We got more requests this year than we ever have, which means, it's fantastic because it means that the teachers know that we're a resource for them. It was really hard. We couldn't give every grant that, that was asked, but we do want to encourage the teachers to still continue to ask us for, for this funding because it's something that we really, we really love to be able to be that resource for things that the district can't, can't fund. I want to mention the JCK Foundation, the parent workshop that was held here in the library a couple of weeks ago. It was part of a program that Mr. Colasuno brought in for the kids and the faculty. It was fantastic. I heard great feedback from the kids, and I definitely learned a lot as a parent. We're going to post the video on the PTA website for people who couldn't attend, and I would encourage you to just kind of try to skim through it if you can. There were a lot of really good snippets, and the bottom line is that as parents, we probably are too hard on ourselves and to try to give ourselves a little bit of grace when it comes to helping our kids navigate their mental health journey, that we also need to recognize that we are having, you know, we also have mental health journeys to go through as well. So, that was a really great program, and again, I want to thank Mr. Colasuno for bringing the JCK Foundation to Takahoe. A couple upcoming things. The Community Service Committee is hosting a food drive to benefit E Cap and Hope, so you'll see drop boxes at both Cottle and the middle school, high school, and you'll see a flyer going out in the next couple of days with details of the things they're looking for. The fifth-grade poinsettia sale is about to launch, so those flyers are going to be going out, and we hope the whole community will, you know, enjoy, you know, join the tradition to decorate your home and support the fifth graders. You know, it's not just for the Cottle kids to support, but hopefully, the whole community can purchase some poinsettias and wreaths. Community Fitness Night next Monday, the 17th, at Pure Bar, so look for some information about that this week. Finally, our data, we, you, I mentioned that we had a new database. It's called Membership Toolkit. So, we migrated everybody over from Schoolbee, but people need to activate their account. So, in case, you, you may not know if you're not getting Takahoe emails, because you get so many emails, you probably feel like you're getting every email, but if you haven't gotten things that you sort of felt like you used to get last year about PTA events, you may not be activated. So, go to takahopta.com, put in your email address, and it'll tell you how to activate. You don't have to become a member to activate the account, so please do it. You can, of course, become a member. We would love your $15 dues. But again, we just really want to make sure that you're receiving all the emails about our upcoming events and programs. And my final thing is that I want to say, congrats to Alex for SEPTA. It's, she has put in so much work over the past six months, and I'm really excited that it's all coming to fruition on December 2nd, so I hope everybody comes out to support. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. So, did you forget something?
First day on the job. And I already forgot. I'm going to be fired. One more thing. Look out for the Metro, the Metro Holiday Sale. That's the company that will, like, customize the swag, whether it's like football, basketball. It's going to come out in a few weeks. You can customize it to whatever sport you want to support, or just the Tigers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for your report and for all the PTA does. I do want to say that when you become a member, it does prompt you to then sign up for the emails. I, I feel like, I feel like it prompted me to put in my information for, like, the new Schoolbee thing when I did it. Did you go through the process and get the email? I think so. But it's, it's a good reason to become a member, because then you'll also get prompted. I really do encourage everybody to become a member of all three organizations. They, that we are one community, and we should all support each other, and these three organizations give back so much to the district, and I'm really looking forward to what SEPTA is going to do for us. Congratulations. Okay. First recognition of the audience. So, I'm just going to read our public participation statement. The Board of Education allows for public participation at its regular monthly meetings. The first recognition of the audience period is reserved for comments or questions related specifically to items on the current public meeting agenda. Each speaker is permitted one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. Responses from the board or superintendent may be provided later in the meeting during the board or superintendent comments section, or may be followed up at a later date as needed. The board and the superintendent will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue during the public comment and question portion of the agenda. Anybody for first recognition of the audience? No? Okay. So, then we move on to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda. Approved Consent Agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approves the consent agenda items two and three. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Joel? All in favor? Business of the board. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District has been informed of donations to be made to the district by the PTA Grants Committee, and whereas the district would like to accept the following donations from the PTA Grants Committee. Second graders' New York Historical Jobs Then-Now Program in the amount of $600. K through five, Super Brady Author Assembly in the amount of $300. K-1, 2 Special Education, Sensory Snoozle Room in the amount of $400. TMS, THS, STEM Class Micro, Bytes and Accessories in the amounts of $500. Fourth grade MyPoll and Hosting Event in the amount of $400. These generous donations are greatly appreciated. Do I have a motion? Lou? Second? Pete? All in favor? Any discussion? Sorry. Any discussion?
I would actually like to just comment and thank the PTA. So, Ms. Warnos and all of the PTA colleagues, thank you for all that you do. I've been able to read all the different approvals that have been sent through, so kudos to our teachers for their recommendations and applying for the grants and the great things that'll come back into our classrooms, and I know how much hard work the PTA does to create the funding to allow these. So, thank you to all of our PTA members and for all of our families that go above and beyond for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, PTA. Our PTA is the best. Approve budget transfers. Yes. Sorry. Oh, whoops. Sorry. All in favor? Thanks for the reminder, Robin. Approve budget transfers. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve the attached budget transfers for graduation supplies. A motion? Pete? Second? Lou? All in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor? Approve professional services. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District hereby approves E2E Exchange LLC in the amount not to exceed $850 for professional services performed in the 2025-2026 school year related to the 2026-2027 E-Rate funding. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Joel? Any discussion? No? Approve professional services. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District hereby approves the engagement of Patty McGee LLC to provide professional development and coaching in the Universal Design for Learning and Literacy Instruction to be paid through Southern Westchester BOCES in the amount not to exceed $19,200. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Joel? Any discussion?
So, yes, this actually does, we, we're going through BOCES, so we'll actually get about 55, 56% back in state aid. That'll come back the following year, so that does get reimbursed, and then hopefully, we're very excited to be recommending, and hopefully, the board will approve in a moment, the Patty McGee Services. So, she'll be coming in as a professional consultant, working with, with our teachers on universal design for learning, and also with a focus on literacy, and really bringing a lot of those strategies that the Cottle team worked on last year, and then bringing them to the next level with, with this curriculum focus of literacy. So, this is the first portion of the proposal, and then I will evaluate midway through her work with us, and then hopefully, we have a phase two if everything, we're seeing all the feedback is done well. She's new for this year? Yes, so. She was, she came as, we got a recommendation from her. Dr. Quackenbush, when she was here, had some, had a connection with her, and she had actually, she'd worked with several local schools as well, in terms of got good recommendations of the work that she had did. And then additionally, we interviewed her, met with her, looked at the priorities of her proposal that she would have, and the Cottle administration, and I felt that she'd be a great fit for continuing the work that was done last year with UDL.
All in favor? Approve a transportation service agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approves Saddle River Tours LLC for transportation services for the following athletic trips. Girls varsity soccer regional playoffs game on November 7th at an amount not to exceed $4,900. Girls varsity soccer New York State Championship game on November 16th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $6,550. And varsity football section championship game on November 14th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $1,800. Do I have a motion? Joel? Second? Pete? Any discussion? So, these are all going for all of our longer trips, right? Which is why we're using coach buses?
Correct. So, the first two are for the girls soccer experiences that were in excess of four or five hours to get to Cortland. They take the coach bus. And actually, the, the varsity football championship game is this Friday, and the reason we're using a coach bus, it was actually a more cost-effective solution than, than the pricing for the yellow buses that we would have needed. So, great addition to allow the boys that opportunity to go in, and also, our cheerleaders will take a different, similar coach from the, from the company that we can order. But this was, again, a cost-effective solution. It was, believe it or not, more effective to do the, the coach bus than the yellow school buses in the travel distance that we looked at.
That's surprising. Thank you. Okay. All in favor? Approve a contract extension. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve the extension of a con, of the contract for snow removal services with Mario Forgeon LTD, the lowest responsible responder for the 23-24 school year RFP, for snow removal services for the 25-26 school year at the same rate as the 24-25 school year. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Scott? Any discussion? Thank you to the Mario Forgeon Company for keeping your rates the same as last year, and all in favor? Authorize an electrical service contract. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District authorizes the district to piggyback on Valhalla Unit Free School District's bid for electrical contract services awarded to Neighbor Electric Corp. through June 30th, 2026, under the same terms and conditions. Do I have a motion? Lou? Second? Pete? Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Excuse me. Quick question. What's the reasoning for, for the change, going to the new electrician? Sorry, Faith.
So, we previously awarded a contractor through the, sorry. We previously awarded a contract to a contractor off of Ed Data Time and Materials Bid, which is another cooperatively bid, time and materials.
Bid, which is another cooperatively bid time and materials service. And they were not as responsive as we need them to be. We are a small district. So in talking with other purchasing agents in other districts, Neighbor has done work for us and is available on the Valhalla bid. So it's, we need to make the move because we need someone that is going to be responsive to us.
Are there, are there prices comparable to the previous there?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor? Approved Personnel Recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Ho Unit Free School District approve Personnel Recommendation A through D. Do I have a motion? Lou, second. Pete, any discussion? No? All in favor? Now we have second recognition of the audience. Again, I'm just going to read our policy. The Board of Education allows for public participation at its regular monthly meetings. The second recognition of the audience period is reserved for comments not associated with the current public meeting agenda. Each speaker is permitted one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. Board response may be provided later in the meeting during the Board comments, or by the administration at a later date as appropriate. Responses from the Board or Superintendent may be provided later in the meeting during the Board and Superintendent comments section, or may be followed up at a later date as needed. The Board and the Superintendent will not engage in back and forth dialogue during the public comment and question period of the agenda. Anybody for second recognition of the audience? No? Yes? Okay.
Hi, I'm Susan Millie. I live in Chester Heights. Thank you all for your service. I want to comment on a discussion that took place at the last monthly meeting. The context of the discussion had to do with contract negotiations, but that's not what my comment is about. My comment is just on the broader subject of spending, because it's come to my attention that there are various school districts in the news over the last year that have found themselves in financial crises. And we certainly don't want that to happen here. And it's made me, you know, a little nervous about our vulnerability, like every district's vulnerability. And in no way, shape, or form, do I mean to insinuate any wrongdoing here in Tocco Ho. Certainly, Ms. Sparks and the whole finance team is great. Not insinuating anything. But I'm sure that in these other districts where they have fallen on hard times, they wish they could go back and prevent the crises that they have to then deal with. So for instance, now, I have to apologize because these are all complicated situations, and I might not have all my facts straight. But for instance, New Rochelle, right next door to us, was going through something for the, in the budget planning process for this current school year. They were faced with a $33 million deficit. And of course, they're a city. It's a bigger district, not Tocco Ho. But still, they had to figure out how to deal with this. They were facing the prospect of eliminating something like 200 staff positions, like just eliminating, eliminating extracurriculars, whatever, or doing a super vote, whatever that thing is called, of, you know, there's a word for that, and I'm forgetting what it's called, to approve a tax levy. And when I was reading of this in the news last spring, I thought, how do you not just sell your house and go? Like, it just seemed very dire to me. And I guess they're managing. But similarly, in Mount Vernon, they had to, I think they closed three schools in the Mount Vernon School District this past spring. Again, deficits. And, you know, I might have some of this stuff murky. But I was just speaking to somebody who lives in Montclair, New Jersey. They have an emergency vote scheduled this next month. Same thing. They have a deficit of many millions of dollars. And they have to figure out how to deal with these things. Either student services are cut, positions are cut, or there's a tax increase. And all of those things, all of those negative outcomes affect property values, individual taxes. And I think it's just, I just feel like we don't talk about these things enough. And so I want to applaud you guys for your diligence to fiscal conservatism. I can't remember if it was you, Pete, or Allison who mentioned that last month, or maybe both of you, about the importance of entering any financial situation with this in mind. And what we all have to do as voters is be informed about who we're entrusting our district to, what their positions are, and, you know, and be diligent, because it looks like, from these other school situations, that, you know, some mismanagement where, you know, people make short-term decisions without considering long-term implications can get them into deep trouble. And I know it's hard to make, I don't envy you guys. You know, all five of you need to be fiscally conservative in order to protect our district. And I know some, you know, you have tough decisions to make, but that really needs to be under, you know, underpinning of everything that you do. So thank you for that. I know you're in a tough position. And I want to remind everybody that you guys are all volunteers, and you're doing the best you can with your conscience and, you know, looking out for the whole community. So thank you for that.
Sorry, I thought I pushed it. Okay, so nobody else for public comment? Okay. Second round of board comments. We'll start this way, this time. No?
No, I just want to wish our football team, this coming Friday, the best. Also, for our girls' soccer, they've really, really worked hard. They're, you know, hopefully, we'll be very successful this weekend. So, you know, I'm just wishing them all the best. That's it.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Best of luck to our athletes that are competing, and the girls' soccer team. Best of luck to them. And I appreciate your comments, Ms. Millie. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And your, I just want to say that our business office does a fantastic job of working on our budget and making sure that we are financially healthy, as well as past board members. And it is, it is an important thing. One of the big problems that New Rochelle did have, that they have made publicly known, is that they used money that they were given one time to make teacher salary decisions, which did really affect them. And so I appreciate it. And our business office has done a great job in the last two years of making sure that we are more transparent. And we are going to do an even better job this year with the ideas that Faith has to make sure that our finances are more transparent to our community members. Comments from the superintendent?
Great. So thank you, Madam President. Kind of echo on some of those sentiments. I concur completely. I think our job as a district is to make sure that we're recommending sustainability, so that all, any program we have and any services we have are, can be continued. You never want to implement something and then not be able to have it sustain the next year. So that kind of ties into our strategic plan, how we're going to be looking long-term. And the fiscal health of our district runs parallel with the academic success of our students. So we have to make sure that we have very articulate plans, and that the financial health, with our facilities, of our infrastructure, our academic programs that we have, we are looking down the road. So every decision is a long-term decision, as well as focusing on the immediate needs of our students here today, you know, for different things. So I appreciate those comments as well. In addition, just wanted to kind of do a few accolades for some things that I didn't mention before. But the Ragamuffin Parade was brought up as a great experience. So to see our student at the high school level, the traditions here at Tocco Ho, as I go through them the first time, are very outstanding. It's great to see our students be celebrated in so many ways, and to be part of the younger students that afternoon in the costume. So that was a great tradition that was instilled here at Tocco Ho. And then additionally, I went to the Haunted House Evening. So the tremendous impact that was in terms of just a community event, and all of our students enjoying it, and families. The line was out the door. It was just so well organized, you know, in terms of walking through it. And the students had such a great time, our seniors that were participating in it, and then just all age levels enjoying that activity. So thank you to everyone that organized it and did a great job with that. And my last comment is really, in addition to all the congratulations to our upcoming teams that'll be participating and competing, but I wanted to thank Mr. Casano. So before even the final whistle blows, and we know there's a celebration, he's already jumping into the planning and all the details for these events. So it doesn't happen by chance. So spends an enormous amount of time making sure that our students have everything taken care of. So I wanted to just applaud his efforts, and just, you know, to acknowledge the hard work that he does in making all of these extra journeys through the state tournaments and the different things our students do. Exceptional for them. So kudos to Mr. Casano and the team that's supporting them, and to all the parents for their continued support of our student athletes and all of our students here at Tocco Ho. So we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, we are not going to adjourn the meeting because we need to go back to executive session for our discussions. We didn't, we weren't able to finish our business earlier. And so we're going to go back downstairs, right? Okay. Thank you all for coming out tonight and for showing your support. Thank you.